Ah, no dog in the fight. Welcome, everyone. I now call the November 8th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Because I can. This meeting is focused on the Budget Study Session. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is Meeting Agenda Approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to Visitor Comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. City clerk, do we have any visitor comment?
We do. Mayor Thompson, Christina Brown is here, speaking virtually. Christina, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, members of the council and staff. My name is Christina Brown, and I work at Kindering. For 60 years, Kindering has served children with disabilities on the East Side, including many in Bothell. In fact, one of our largest campuses is in Bothell. Thank you for considering our Human Services grant funding requests. I'm here tonight to thank you for your past funding of two of our programs through that grant request. Those two programs are CCPC and FIT. And I'm also here tonight to urge you to consider fully funding our requests for those same programs in 2023. So first, CCPC. CCPC helps preschool and childcare providers support the needs of children in their care who have developed mental delays or who are displaying challenging behaviors. It also helps families who have children in childcare connect to pediatric therapies and supports. Last year, our consulting team served 14 different Bothell childcare programs. And every child, or yeah, every child our team supported ended up staying in their childcare or preschool program. So we're asking once again for $30,000 for this program, which is in the face of increasing program demand in East King County this past year due to the pandemic. There are two reasons for that. One, families who sat out on childcare during early pandemic years are now wanting slots for their kids, so there's increased demand there. And then the second reason is that the pandemic came with a lot of stress and isolation for families, which means that children are also now presenting some more challenging behaviors as well as developmental delays. Heartbreakingly, in our experience, delayed consultation can lead to expulsion for kids in childcare and preschool. And because children of color and children with disabilities are more likely to be expelled, retention is critical to our shared equity goals with the city. So I urge you to consider fully funding CCPC at the $30,000 level. Second, I'd like to talk about our program for children who are homeless, which is called FIT, or Families in Transition for Long. FIT services fall into three general buckets. So first, FIT provides therapy, infant mental health services, therapeutic playgroups, and parent coaching. Second, FIT connects families to resources. And third, FIT uses outreach to find children who are in need of services. FIT serves a highly vulnerable part of the housing insecure population. Nationally, you may be aware, most families who are experiencing homelessness are households that are headed by single women who have children who are younger than six. Due to the stress of housing instability, homeless children often experience trauma that profoundly impacts their cognitive development. 75% of unhoused children experience one or more major developmental delays. Early supports, like those that Kindering provides, are one of the most effective ways to support children in these circumstances. As our region continues to grow, we anticipate greater need for these kinds of services in the years to come. For that reason, we're requesting $9,500 for this program. Your funding would support the high-contact work that we need to reduce disparities for unhoused children in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all I have for the sign-up sheet, Mayor Thompson. However, I do believe there's a gentleman or two in the audience, and they may wish to speak. Do either of you wish to speak under public comment? If you do, please come up to the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. No, if you tap that button there.
Ah, okay. My name is Terry Losch. I'm in Bothell 40 precinct. I've been to this, every council meeting, I think, for the last seven years. However, I've never chosen to speak, but at the last meeting, a resolution was introduced that was affirmative of abortion. And I think that as a city council, I think this is a very inappropriate thing to be a topic of discussion. There are over 630,000 abortions performed in the United States every year. Three-quarters of those are from, involve Planned Parenthood. Planned Parenthood is seeing an uptick in abortions since Democrats have chosen to make this a focus of their rhetoric. This is a subject, I think, that is inappropriate. Less than 20% of Americans are in favor of late-term abortion. There's no threat to abortion rights for women. There's no reason for it to be discussed in this body. And if there is such a concern, it should go to a voter of the electorate. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, clerk. All right, next, we're moving on to our study session, which is Agenda Bill 22156, Consideration of the Preliminary 2023-2024 Biennial Budget. And city manager, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson, and good evening, members of the city council. Tonight, we are having a special agenda that is focused solely on the budget conversation. It'll be a study session only, so if anybody watching at home and noticing that some of the pacing is different, that's why. With wide discretion, then, because everything falls under the budget, and I think we'd all agree, that I do want to take a quick moment to introduce Jason Greenspan, who is our new Community Development Director and is here tonight. Jason, welcome to Bothell. And I know that while tonight, with the topics that we're anticipating, there's probably not any questions coming Jason's way, it will become quickly apparent that every other question from then on, in our meetings, will start going to community development. So now, we're really grateful that Jason's here, and this is Mark's, the one-week mark. And I'm glad it's been great to have him serving along with us. So, thank you, Jason. The other thing I wanted to do is just a reminder as well about, as we think about our municipal budget, about all the things that go into it. And I think when we have the conversations around this time of year, when we're getting into approval time, we look at the changes. And I know this council actually, though, has really appreciated a lot of things that go unseen normally, like the beauty of a clean utility pipe. So we have a lot of good things, but I just wanted to do a quick thank you as well to our Public Works crews, who, you know, we had a storm come up that greatly exceeded what the National Weather Service was predicting in terms of wind gusts. We knew there would be some potential flooding, and there's been a lot of great investment in Bothell to be prepared for that, but it's hard to stop the wind. And really, again, thankful to the crews who were out in our community over the weekend, keeping people safe, coordinating with our utilities, and just all around doing a great job and keeping us connected. So thank you to them and to our community, too, who many suffered without power for some time. And there's those around us that still are, so we're thankful for what we have. So with that, tonight in the study session, you'll notice that we're focusing on two main themes. One is Human Services. And for that, Becky Range, our Acting Assistant City Manager, is going to lead us through. And then there's also a series of public safety questions primarily that were submitted or raised at our October study session related to police services. And so our police chief is here to walk through responses to those. Also in your packet, on the theme of public safety, but there was a question that came up in October about schools on beacons, so I want to call that out specifically. There's an attachment. Happy to answer any questions about the school beacon. Oh, see, I'm cut off. It's like the Academy Awards. The school beacon maintenance and replacement, and so where the placements are, so we can address that tonight as well, although there's no separate presentation for it. And then, of course, to the council, the council budget question tracking sheet is filling out fast. I think we're up to eight pages. And we'll continue the practice of, after tonight, we'll put in a written summary of the things that were discussed. And then we have one last batch of questions to respond to next week, and we'll have the final public hearing and see if it's time to bring forward the budget for potential adoption on December 6. So with all that being said in the lead-in, I'm going to turn things over to Becky to lead us through the conversation about human services, and she'll be here to answer questions as well.
Mayor, deputy mayor, and council members, thank you for your time tonight. As Kyle mentioned, this is just a study session, so we won't be making any decisions. But we'll just be discussing the Human Services program and the draft budget, and then answer any questions that you might have for us. I would like to go over first just some definitions and talk about the role of the city when it comes to human services. We use "human services" phrase a lot, but I'm not sure that everyone really understands what that means. And I'd like to talk about what your current investments already are in the area of human services. And then, at the end, we'll talk about the draft budget items and give you a little bit more detail and insight on those items. So just for anyone who may be watching, or for anyone who isn't quite sure what we mean when we talk about human services, it is simply a support system for those who are struggling with basic human needs. That could be anything from food and housing, financial instability, health and wellness challenges. And that could include physical health issues as well as behavioral health or mental health challenges. Often, when we talk about human services, we do target this support system to persons that are low to moderate income. But one of the things I want to say is, it's really important, everyone in our community should have the opportunity to thrive and succeed in the Bothell community, and that's really important. But often, we may be asked, why does a city get involved in human services? It's pretty simple, really. It's the right thing to do. But also, the well-being and health of every resident impacts our overall community healthy, or having a healthy and safe community overall. Because if we all do better, then our community is more healthy and safe. And something I'd like to mention, while we don't have a human services program that's completely developed yet, you know, we're growing and a changing city. When you hear us talk about our human services program, you're going to hear two words often, and that's equity and dignity. And those are the two words that we really want to use and the values when we think about a human services program and how we truly help people who are in need. So as we are in the infant stages of our human services program, the one thing I kind of want to talk about, and you'll see this modeled throughout other cities, cities and municipalities themselves, we don't provide human services. That's not what we're good at. We have nonprofit partners. We have other governmental agencies at different levels that are better at that than cities. But you may be asking yourself, what is our role when it comes to human services? So as we start to build and develop our strategy and our program, we will very likely model it similar to our neighbors in this area. We have three main roles when it comes to human services, and you'll see these roles surface in lots of different things. We are a planner at times. We're a funder at times, and we are often a connector. So if you think about the planner role, every time you, as city council, or our staff make decisions, make policy decisions, implement programs, we should always be thinking about needs of the community, particularly needs of people who are struggling. And can we anticipate those needs and make decisions that help or improve the outcomes? And most definitely, make decisions that don't harm people that are already struggling with challenges. You are probably most familiar with our role as a funder. We don't have unlimited resources, but we do use general grant fund dollars to disperse local grants to our nonprofit partners and groups in the community that are out there on a day-to-day basis, meeting the needs of community members. And we do that to help support that network of services. And you will actually see a more detailed agenda item come before you next week with some grant program recommendations. And then, at times, we will also help disperse grant funds. Say, for example, if we receive federal grant dollars, state grant dollars, such as ARPA or the CARES Act, we will help disperse grant funds such as those into the community. But one of the biggest roles we play at the city is we are a connector. We should be a connector. We should help people in the community connect with other people that are doing similar services that they are, so that we can leverage their work. We should engage and connect with community groups and service providers. I will admit that that's something we probably need to do a little bit better. We have the opportunity to make connections, and I think we're in a unique position to do that a little bit better. We also, especially this last year, we have a huge role in regional connections. So if we have strategic regional partnerships with our neighboring cities, with different agencies, we can leverage resources that are in short supply. As we started thinking about the Human Services budget, you know, we didn't already have a great picture of where you're already investing human services dollars. So I know we probably missed a few things here, but I just want to note, there are some areas across multiple departments where human services investments are made, and some of that work is being done. You have a domestic violence advocate position. You have invested already in the Radar Navigator program. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. That co-responder mental health program is, in large part, grant-funded, but you've already invested public safety levy dollars into that program. You did authorize a community court coordinator position, and in some ways, we have started to develop the community court itself. And I don't know if everyone watching tonight is aware of this. I am just now learning all the details. We also fund a public defense service contract for the indigent, for someone who requires a criminal defense services. We have utility assistance programs. I know many of our public work staff work hard to, I would say, our utility assistance program itself under ARPA is very small, but we spend a lot of time connecting residents to different resources and different programs where they can get help with their utility bills. You're probably well aware that we are involved with ARCH, and so we do invest quite heavily in ARCH membership and also in the Housing Trust Fund. So one of our largest investment programs that we prioritize for the community is the nonprofit grant program. And so we do have a council committee that helps review those applications and set the priorities and the strategy for those grants each year. Some time ago, the council kind of discussed that the grant program would be about $8 per capita. So that's about how much we spend each year. We do have about 30 different contracts or line items that we fund and that we work with those administrators in the nonprofits with. And right now, it's about $380,000 each year. Each cycle, the council subcommittee, they work really hard to establish what the priority areas should be for those grants. Often, it doesn't change. Often, housing, food, behavioral health, seniors and youth, that's always a pretty standard priority. But I will say, with all the challenges from the pandemic in the last few years, behavioral health, stress and anxiety, and mental health resources have really become much more of a priority for our community. And then this last year, we do have a little bit of a unique grant program. It was, of course, the ARPA-funded Behavioral Health Services Contract with the Center for Human Services that is completely ARPA-funded. So in the last year, city staff has become much more involved in some very large regional projects. These are very critical to our region and our community. And I will say this, they are, in many ways, not a part of your budget quite yet. Some, a little bit of the Radar Navigator Expansion Program is. But much of the work here, there's staff work that comes from collaborating with all the different cities and with the different agencies for these programs. But they are each very, very important, very large, but very wonderful collaborative projects. The first coalition, the North King County Coalition on Homelessness, is a group of five cities that we worked together under an MOU that all of you approved earlier this year. We worked together to help solve homelessness in this region, which we know is a lofty goal. But one of the components of that collaborative is that we are now working with the King County Regional Housing Authority to pool funding so that, as a region, we can be a little more strategic with our homelessness providers. And you will also see a lengthy agenda item on that King County Regional Housing Authority come before you next week. And we have talked about it a few times, so I won't go into too much more detail. And then, of course, one of the other amazing projects that five cities have been working on is the Radar Navigator Improvement and Expansion Program, which has now been renamed Regional Crisis Response. So you had already invested in the Radar Navigator program. You had a public safety levy-funded position. The current radar program has, you know, around three to four staff members. With five cities working together very closely and streamlining the program, leveraging resources, with just a little bit, probably about double over the price, you move from around three to four staffers to 13 staff members, which is really amazing. And I always want to really give credit to this five-city coalition. It is not easy to get five city administrators or deputies in a room to work on a program that truly breaks down silos, and they're not concerned about their own jurisdictions. It's been really an amazing project to see happen. And then I think everyone is familiar with another collaborative effort, the Crisis Receiving Center. I'm very proud of the North King County cities who work together to have a vision. How do we actually have a physical location for someone to go to? You need help. You need someone to call. Perhaps you need someone to respond. That's a mental health co-responder. But in some situations, you actually need a place to go. And so we've made some real strides on locating a crisis-receiving center right here in our region. And then, King County is, in many ways, modeling the work that we started here. And they are putting forth a public safety levy to have additional crisis-receiving centers throughout the county. So those are three really big projects that are part of your human services program. So I want to talk a little bit about what's actually in your draft budget. It can be a little complicated sometimes because, depending on what the item is for human services, it may be located in a different part of the budget. And so I just wanted to highlight either the requested items that the council committee has already discussed or let us know that they believed it was a priority, or things that were in the budget that are related to our human services program. And we can, of course, go into any more detail about these. I'm sure you might have some questions, but I'll just hit the highlights. We did mention already the grants program. There's actually a typo there. I think in the budget, it actually calls for $390,000 each year. And that's that $8 per capita benchmark that you've set. There is a one-time community needs assessment in the draft budget. Right now, that is in the ARPA fund, so it might be harder to see, depending on where you're looking. This community needs assessment has been on our staff work plan for multiple budget cycles. And we really just haven't been able to get it done. We don't have any human services staff right now. I think there were just some challenges to actually getting that completed. But what this is, we hire a consultant who comes in and actually assesses our community, talks to our nonprofit providers, does an in-depth study to tell us what our community needs are in the area of human services. We consistently make decisions and ask ourselves, do we have the right data? Do we really know what's needed in our community? And so there are a couple of other cities who have already done community needs assessments, and the returns that get back on that are very, very helpful to develop your human services program and to know where to really put your resources. So we really would like to get that done. That's a one-time ARPA-funded thing. We have an amazing nonprofit collaborative group in NUSA. And I honestly believe that they have let Bothell work with them and coordinate with them, but we need to pay that membership fee, and that's $1,000 a year. We also had a request from some on the Human Services Committee that perhaps we should also engage and collaborate with the East Side Human Services Forum, which is another group of nonprofits and providers that we could coordinate with and be a little bit more strategic in our human services program, and that is $5,000 a year. We talked a little bit about the Radar Navigator program. So before the expansion and improvement of the program, you already had about $175,000 in your current budget from the public safety levy. This new amount is what I was referencing. That would be our membership contribution to the new program, and it would move us closer to the 24-hour, seven-day coverage, and also expand that team from around three to four, maybe five, all the way to 13, and give us a much greater coverage. And one of the things we really like about this co-responder program is that they work really closely with our first responders. And so it helps our police department. It helps our first responders that are out in the field. So pretty amazing work that's went into that. We have talked a lot about the current Behavioral Health Services Contract that we have with Center for Human Services. That is a $1 million contract right now, a $1 million contract for one year. The amazing thing about that is that allowed Center for Human Services to bring back a physical clinic into your city limits, which is pretty amazing. We're going to give you a little bit more of an update on Center for Human Services, I believe, next week, but they are in place. They have counselors embedded and coordinating with schools now in our city and delivering some pretty amazing services. We had always talked about, what do we do in the next biennium? We could use ARPA funds to extend that contract for two more years, and the draft budget right now has $750,000 each year. We have talked a lot about human services staff. Bothell is growing and changing. We have some amazing staff that are, that all kind of pitch in a little bit to do human services work. But there are a lot of things happening with human services programming, and there are a lot of needs. So once we do the community needs assessment, we will probably know a little bit more about what our long-term plan needs to be. But we thought it might be a wise use of ARPA funds to fund a limited-term, two-year human services coordinator position so that we can have someone who's really focused on the work that needs to be done. That's about $130,000 a year. That's about $130,000 a year. I only put this slide up because we've also heard from you in a couple of different areas that there are also long-term needs or long-term thoughts or long-term planning that are slightly related to human services. Although they're not in the budget, per se, we want you to know that we've heard you when you mention things. We've talked a lot about potential public-private partnerships for affordable housing moving forward. Maybe some of those creative partnerships have a human service element to them. Maybe it's space for more providers. Perhaps to complement the community court, we establish a community resource center into the future. Again, not anything that's in your current budget, but we just want you to know that we've heard that those are things you might be interested long-term. That's really all the information I have. I am sure you have lots of questions for us, and we're happy to take those at this time.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Becky, for this presentation. I don't particularly have many questions, having served on the Human Services Committee, but I really do appreciate you putting together this presentation. I think one of my concerns was that there's a lot of pieces all over the city that relate to human services, and it would be, it would be a burden to pull it all together. And I think you did a great job with that. I like what I'm seeing, the questions that came up along the way you answered in your presentation. And so I'm looking forward to hearing from my colleagues who aren't on the, on the Human Services Committee who might have questions, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. It was really helpful. I had a question about the, the amount for the Center for Human Services. You had said it was a million-dollar contract, and I saw it was 750,000. What would that, do we know yet, like, what that reduction would mean for the Center for Human Services? Is that money going to be made up elsewhere? You know, just kind of what, what's the thought behind that?
I don't have the exact details on what that would do to the way they deliver services, but I can ask them for a little bit more data.
Okay, I was just curious. I, I would love to learn more about what they're doing in the city because it sounds really interesting. And I noticed the difference, and that's like a 25% reduction. So I, I just, it just caught my curiosity, but everything looks great. And the idea of a human services coordinator sounds amazing because there are so many moving parts. And it sounds like it would be a relief to also the staff who are kind of like pitching in on the side, too. So, thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Becky. This is awesome, serving on the Human Services Committee as well. I'm not very, I'm very familiar with all these things, but I still took notes. The question I have is, and I've mentioned this before, about the human services coordinator. It seems to me like we're just, you know, it's important to have the needs assessment to figure out whether we need more than one human services coordinator. But I feel like we need at least one permanent, because after these two years, I don't think the needs are going to diminish. So when ARPA funding expires, we have an opportunity right now to talk about this. And if, and I, I, human services is a priority, I feel, for, for the city. You know, we talked about this earlier in the, in the year. I feel like we need to have more permanent funding in this. Sounds, looks like the boss is going to jump in.
Yeah, so we definitely heard you in the original October study session. And I think if that's the, if that's the general direction from council, that the preference would be to fund that starting next year out of the general fund. We'll come back with the exact.
So my question was going to be.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, no, it's okay. No, it's good, no, it's good. I don't know if it's a general, it's just my one out of seven view. Because we need to look at opportunity cost. So if we, if we're spending 130K here, ARPA, what would we have, what do we not, what are we not spending it on? You know, that's urgent also. And then conversely, if we do make this permanent, what are we not spending that 130K from the general fund on, right? And those are the questions. I feel like there's more information that we need.
Yeah, appreciate that. So we can, we can bring back a scenario of what that looks like in the general fund for next year. The, the opportunity cost of really what it would be of, of doing it for next year is it will just change, it'll change the trajectory of what our end fund balance looks like. Unless council wanted to propose moving it to general fund and not funding something else, but that's not what I'm hearing you say. You know, we are, knowing there's, there's several unknowns coming, and I want to be really careful about adding positions, knowing that we potentially will have recession coming, too. We don't want to add a position to cut a position. That be looking at making sure that our, our reserves stay healthy. The impact of moving this one position into general fund starting next year is not going to change that dramatically. So from the, the trade-offs that way, there's not as much. With ARPA funding, there's still a considerable amount of money that the council has to consider in terms of how you'd want to allocate it. And so that's, I think, a conversation, too, that outside the budget even. If, if it comes up and if you want to address it during the budget, we can still try and figure out how. And I'd say the nice thing about ARPA is that, you know, we can figure this out in the first quarter of the year and reallocate, and that all works, too. But there's a significant amount of money that still can be designed in terms of how does council want to allocate those remaining funds. So there's also not something identified that wouldn't be happening. And I'd be happy to bring that back. So if there is an interest from council of saying we, just from the general standpoint of we want to invest going forward, we can do that. The other, there is another position that was proposed for ARPA funding for next year, and part of the reason we didn't, like, get into the details of this is because it has nothing to do with human services, but it is in the parks program. So there's the parks capital program, capital manager, I know, was discussed as well. And the rationale on that one, just really quick, and again, I'm happy to bring back more details next week. But the rationale there is, is we're doing research to see if that position can be funded through the capital budget, similar to how Public Works positions are funded through the capital budget. So doing one year in ARPA funding would give us the opportunity to then look and see, is there an opportunity to fund it through the capital budget? And we then could true that up at the mid-buy. But, so it's kind of giving us time to review. That hasn't had anything to do with human services tonight, though, but I didn't want it to seem like we hadn't, hadn't been looking at that. So we'll, we'll bring information again if council would like to consider how we fund that position. Happy to, to bring that as an alternative.
I appreciate that, you know. Human services are not going to go away in a year or, the, the needs. I mean, we're going to do a needs assessment to get exactly how much. I anticipate us maybe perhaps wanting to put a bigger investment, especially example, for example, in grants in the future, you know. But Becky, I feel like we don't have people to actually manage that whole process and making it only temporary, temporary seem, like, because the issue is going to remain, right? So beyond the two years, if we're saying we're going to reconsider this in two years, or maybe look, look at the mid-biennial and see if we can reallocate and do all that kind of stuff, and think about these things, give ourselves another year, then that will be, that might be okay. But I feel like this is something we really need to consider making more permanent. At least this, this one position, I think we're probably going to need more in the future, but at least this one position. Similarly, in the parks, the capital projects, we saw that in the survey. We saw that in, like, we need, we, we saw the, the need for more investment in, in the, in the parks departments. So I anticipate that's something to be. But then I want to hear from you, you know, and Nick, maybe, about the, does it make sense to make a long-term investment into that particular position? Or is it short-term, give us the plan, and we'll hire other people to do the execution type thing? I don't know too much about that particular space, so that's my view. Thank you.
Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Becky, for the presentation. Very helpful, being not somebody on that committee, hearing the updates from that. Couple of questions from me. I know you said it's difficult to, to determine how much we're spending overall in human services, given that staff time is being used in other departments. But I was curious, between the grant program and the current investments, and then anything that we can figure out in terms of staff time from other departments, what's our total current investment in human services? Is that something we maybe could come back with next meeting or the meeting after?
I can add up the amounts of the items that I listed. I guess I am a little nervous about, you know, giving it an amount because it is really difficult because there's, some human services work is kind of threaded in multiple areas or multiple programs. So it's, it is a little bit difficult, but I can actually add that up and maybe give you a little bit more information.
Okay, that would be great. For the Crisis Receiving Center, have you talked to Evergreen at all about being a public hospital district? Would they contribute funds or staff or resources to that initiative, given that it's going to reduce the load on their ER, hopefully, with the plan? But are they interested, as our hospital district, in partnering with us on that?
The five-city coalition actually spoke with Evergreen first before even exploring options with the other providers. There were several months of discussions with Evergreen, and it, it just didn't really develop into what it needed to.
Okay. For the Center for Human Services Contract, are we looking at partnering with other neighboring jurisdictions on continued funding, knowing that we're currently funding it with ARPA funds? Those are one-time revenue source, and our policy is typically not to spend one-time revenue sources on things that are going to be ongoing?
Yes, and the Center for Human Services, they actually have five different locations in the North King County cities. And so actually, one of our neighboring cities, we connected our neighboring city to the Center for Human Services for them to actually use ARPA funds in a similar way. So there is some synergy there, and that's one of the reasons why Center for Human Services was selected to do the behavioral health contract because they are very embedded in multiple communities, and it's, it's a little bit of a cost savings for multiple cities, so.
Okay. My concern is, if we're going to do it ongoing, we need to identify a permanent funding source and decide what else is not going to be funded in favor of this. And, you know, I'm sure that's for future discussions and maybe the next biennium budget, but I just want to be cognizant of the fact that we are using ARPA funds, one-time monies for something that we're considering a longer-term solution.
And when we first started having discussions with multiple nonprofit partners to consider this contract, we were very frank with all the providers to say, this is one-time money. We, we can't make you any assurances that we could provide future funding. And so we've had those same kind of discussions with Center for Human Services.
Okay. The last question that I had was around the public safety funds for the Navigator Program. I know those funds are also kind of limited-term funds. They're, they're there because we do have a, we do have a levy in place, but those will eventually run out as well. So have we thought about long-term, how we're going to fund that ongoing? Are we thinking about the next levy, rolling that in and making that a big part of the levy? Or are we thinking other funding sources might be appropriate?
The team has actually had a lot of discussions about funding. One of the great values of having the five cities work together is that our ability to go after grants is much more strengthened. And so there's a lot of discussions about grants. And we also, when we wrote the ILA, we did have a lot of flexibility there. We, we set up a lot of flexibility for how we make decisions, how we allocate resources. We don't have all the answers yet, but I feel very good about how we wrote the ILA so that it, it didn't, it's going to give us a better chance to succeed for the long term, I think. But yeah, lots of discussions.
Okay, great. I, I just think it's important, everything we do to consider the long-term aspect of it, how we're going to pay for it, how do we keep it going so it's not potentially a one-time thing? Unless we are really intending for it to be a one-time thing, that's fine, too. But just thinking longer-term about sustainable revenue sources and sustainable funding for these things that we put in place, so we don't have a potential takeaway. I know in my role in, in the corporate world, if we take something away from our clients, it's seen as a much more negative thing than having never provided it in the first place. So I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that with our residents as well.
And all of the councils are having the same discussion. And so there's been a lot of coordination with the county to talk about the mid-grant funding. So yeah, lots of conversations.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Becky, presentation. It's always good to hear what our needs are in our community. I did have a few questions around the, the hospital piece, I think Councilmember Manki brought up. He said that there were conversations with the, the district. Sounds like nothing came to fruition on that. Is there a way we can learn why that didn't get flushed out? Or if there may potentially be an opportunity there? I think it's, it's worth at least taking a look at. And I guess I would want to know, as a council member, that we had looked at that and if there is an opportunity to, to see if there's available services there that we can use, especially since Evergreen is close to the North Shore area of the five cities anyway. So it'd be good to kind of flush that out. So that was just one of the things Councilmember Manki brought up that came to mind. The other is the comment city manager made about reserves staying healthy. I think that's very important in today's times, recessions, things like that. We don't know what the future holds, but we need to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible for our entire community. So having, studying what that, those needs assessments are, I think is going to be critical at this time to fully understand what the needs are, not only within Bothell, but regionally, but specifically to Bothell because we're, we're here to represent the, the community of Bothell. So we do want to help others, but, you know, first and foremost, we want to make sure that we're using our dollars to help those in our, in our community. You had mentioned the $8 per capita, I think, is, is the cost. Was that on the 380,000, or is that overall?
That's how we come to the 390,000 each year, is using the $8 per capita calculation. And we've tried to do some comparisons with other cities because no one's really quite sure where we got the $8 per capita. But we are, we're very much in line with what our neighboring cities are spending for grants, maybe even a little bit more. But it is hard to compare, you know, apples to apples when you talk to different cities. But that's how we come up with the, the general amount for the grant funds each year. But I do want to mention, when we talk about human services here at Bothell, we often hear people just talk about the grants. And the human services program is much more than just the nonprofit grants. And so we're trying to kind of clarify that messaging. But did you have any questions? Did I answer your question at all about?
Yeah, I think it was part of the $390,000. I think what comes to mind is, I've had the opportunity to serve on human services as well. And I know that we often had conversations in the past about understanding where the dollars are going and understanding who those are, you know, what the outcomes are and who that's serving within our community. And I think, as we know, we talk about $380,000 here, $750,000 there, $150,000 here. Those eventually add up to millions of dollars. And I think that it would be good to have a kind of a spreadsheet, a menu of things that we're actually doing within our community so that we can show our community where we're actually helping. And on top of that, I'd like to see, hopefully, we could see outcomes of who we're actually helping. So if you spend $2 million and you're helping five people, that's an outcome, right? You're helping five people. So hopefully, we can see that in totality of what that actually means, who we're helping, who we're serving, where they're actually from, what part of the region, et cetera. So I think, I think that would be important. Matching grant funds, as we talk about, you know, King County and the work that they're doing as well, just making sure that we're leveraging our dollars with their dollars as well. Hopefully, we can, we can be looking at that into the future as well. The mayor brought up, or excuse me, the deputy mayor brought up a good, a great point about parks. And so it, my mind starts going about, we're talking human services. So being out and being active, youth, seniors, I'd like to see how we're helping those within our community as well, because as, you know, taxes are increased, we're seeing more and more people taxed, you know, out of their, where they live, you know, for seniors. And we have a very high population of homeless youth here in our, in our. And we have a very high population of homeless youth here in our, in our region. So it'd be, it'd be good to understand how our dollars, our human service dollars are, are actually helping seniors and youth in our community as well. Those are a couple of things that come to mind. And then for me, probably the biggest thing that I'm hearing is equity, the piece of equity and ensuring that we do no harm to certain members of our community by doing one part for one part of our community versus another part, making sure that we're being equitable with our spending based on the needs within our community. I think that it's important that that needs assessment is done prior to us actually determining where we want to spend our money. And then lastly, I can't agree more on the, the ARPA funding, making sure that we're not spending money that we're not going to have in the future. And if we're going to spend money on things that we're not going to have in the future, finding a way or what's going to fund that in the future so that we can continue to fund it. I agree with the city manager, we don't want to hire folks and then lay folks off. But I just, I'll leave it with this, that I, I think we're in unprecedented times right now. We haven't quite felt the struggle yet, but it's coming. I think we need to be prepared for it. While it seems like a lot of people are going back to work, there's a lot of people who are not, are not. There's a lot of people who are struggling within our community that have different needs. And so I really want to make sure that we're doing our part to support each and everyone in our community. But I thank you for pulling this all together.
Councilmember Zornz?
A couple of things. I want to echo appreciation for being mindful of our new position's sustainable. And I'm also, also self-talking here, that if the economy really tanks, it's going to be more than just, are the new positions sustainable? What else can, you know, what else is going to be difficult to sustain in the city? And human services is helping people at that tipping point or who've gone past the tipping point. I also think parks is part of that general mental health that helps keep people from getting to that tipping point. So I would appreciate if, if there's an opportunity, as we talk about adding positions for my convenience, so I apologize for that, a, just in one place where we're just talking about adding staff for different departments, if that's in one place, so we can look at that, what, you know, what that, what are the things that are being asked for? And just so we're not having to flip around on pages or scroll through pages, get an, an idea of what departments need more bodies to help lift the load. That's my request. And then the other thing that came to mind was, why, that was a great question to ask about Evergreen. And I thought, I wonder if it's because Evergreen funnels a lot of their work over to Harborview. So my next question is, might there be a place to see if Harborview and Children's would want to enter into a conversation with our five cities on, on how we could, they might be able to give us some direction or some support? Or maybe there's things that they would be willing to contribute that would help ease their, their load? But I would think both Children's and Harborview would be, could be players in what we're talking about in the future.
And I do want to provide a little bit of clarification. I think I might have confused everyone by talking about the crisis receiving center. So the, the crisis receiving center, that project has actually been very successful with grant funding. So right now, they already have a 4.2 million dollar grant from the state. They have another $5 million grant that they're very likely to get. And then King County has also earmarked up to 11 million dollars for the crisis receiving center. So I mention it because it is a human services work that's done, but I will say it doesn't really impact your budget much at all. So, which is exciting. And then also, they are a for-profit provider. So once they do their design and their construction and their startup with those grant funds, they actually will bill insurance and, and won't really require much funding from anyone moving forward. So I hope that helps.
No, that's great information, which probably, what you're also telling me is if they're for-profit, they're probably already interfacing with other institutions that provide similar services or where they might make some transfers and that kind of thing. So that's real helpful. Thank you.
Should I go? All right. Did I lose count? Good questions, thank you. I just wanted to point out that I really appreciate that this came up right alongside of public safety. I don't know if that was intentional or not, but these investments keep our community safe as well. And they keep them safe from things that we traditionally have not helped them with and, and we haven't. And I, I really appreciate, I don't know if that was intentional or not, but how these are coming. And I'm also really happy that we're talking about these in advance of an expected economic downturn, because that's when they're going to mean the most to our community. And that's going to be when they are the most needed. And if we do have those, when people start to feel economic pain, that's pretty cool. That's pretty exciting. I, I don't remember who brought this up earlier, but somebody brought up, you know, what's the delta between 750 and a million in the Center for Human Services contract? At some point in time in the future, I'd just like to know, what are we not buying? That we are currently buying for that? And that's about all I've got. So thank you so much, Becky. Thank you so much for doing this among all of the other hats that you wear. We appreciate it and it will be nice to get somebody on board to do that job so it's one less thing that we can say, just have Becky do it. All right. City manager, do we want to move on to the next step of this?
Absolutely. And we can actually, since it's all one, one big item, we'll transition over to the chief of police, Ken Suberlich, and let him pull up his slides. Look at that.
He can be taught. Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, city council members. For those in the audience, I am the Bothell Police Chief, Ken Suberlich. The purpose of my presentation tonight is to provide answers and information related to questions posed to city manager standard as part of the budget process from the October 18th council meeting. See if I can get this to click now. All right. Tonight, I will be providing information on the following. Police response times based on current staffing levels, an update on crime in Bothell by type and frequency, our 2022 school zone enforcement efforts, provide an overview of costs related to the 2324 budget, and lastly, future needs. Police response times versus calls for service. With regard to police response times, the Bothell Police Department tracks calls for service rather than response times. This is for several reasons. Emergency calls routed through a 911 communication center are often designated with a particular call type, which can change as the call progresses. An example would be a noise complaint that turns out to be a domestic violence call. Noise complaints are a lower-level call for service that officers respond to without lights and siren. However, should an officer arrive and determine that a domestic violence assault has occurred, the call is re-designated to a domestic violence call, which would have triggered a code response. Because of these issues, response data is often unreliable, and not just for our department, but for most departments. And our computer automated, automated dispatch system can't pull that data out efficiently or accurately. So we focus on just calls for service. We can drill down and actually come up with response times on individual calls when we're, when we are looking for that data, but just as a whole, we can't pull that data. So what creates a call for service? It is a call that comes from our 911 call center, either through 911, non-emergency phones, online reporting, or actions witnessed by officers such as traffic stops. Calls received by the call center are often then screened and directed to the appropriate call center, outside agency, department such as Public Works, or work groups within the Bothell Police Department, such as animal control, radar, traffic, detectives, and uniform patrol. For this presentation, I've divided calls for service into two types. Calls for service receives, received by our communication center and two, calls for service or incidents in which officers respond. The calls officers respond to can be assigned through our communication center or self-assigned through what we call on-view activity. On-view activity is exactly what it sounds like. It's behavior the officer observes while on patrol. Some examples of this can be assisting motorists, observing suspicious or criminal behavior, and driving offenses that would result in a traffic stop. Not every call for service becomes an incident an officer responds to, and not every incident results in a report. Call for service data. The data we have for calls for service for the past five years is as follows. In looking at the data, you can see that our high watermark for calls for service and incidents was in 2017. Since 2017, calls for service and incident numbers have decreased. Calls for service have decreased approximately 26% in our communication center. And incidents officers respond to have decreased by 18%. There are a number of factors at play when we are reviewing these numbers. Some of the decreases can be attributed to a reduction in just some crime and some crimes not being reported. Fewer officers working the road creating calls for service, such as traffic stops and proactive policing. We also have the Blake decision in state legislation related to drug crimes. There's also better geolocation of cell phones for calls into our call center, which would normally, we'd get a call and they have to geolocate that particular call and put that to the correct call center, such as State Patrol or King County. And for good measure, we have COVID. Now you may ask, how does COVID reduce crime? A good example of this would be residential burglaries. People are working from home. It's hard to burglar a home if there's people working from the home. So we have seen a reduction in residential burglaries. And I probably should add, just good luck. We've, we've been very fortunate to see a reduction in crime. I know that some of our neighboring municipalities haven't been so lucky. You'll also notice that I added a yellow line to this graph, which depicts a number of police units dispatched to incidents. This was provided to show that often, multiple police units are dispatched to a single incident. I have the following information in response to the request for an update on crime in Bothell by type and frequency to include traffic control and school zones. First, our records management system automatically reports our crime statistics to the FBI through what's called NIBERS, which stands for National Incident-Based Reporting System. NIBERS automatically separates crimes into Part I crimes and Part II crimes. Part I crimes, as defined by the FBI, are homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, theft, vehicle theft, and arson. Part II crimes are considered all other crimes. Examples would include forgery, fraud, sex offense felonies other than rape, sex offense misdemeanors, non-aggravated assaults, weapons violations, offenses against family, and narcotics The data we have for Part I and Part II crimes for the city of Bothell is as follows. As you can see, Part I crimes start out with 1,407 in 2017 and decreased a bit in 2018 and 2019. It increased again in 2020 and is projected to fall to around 1,100 in 2022. And for data purposes on this screen, we included the 2022 data as we currently have it. That's from January 1st of this year through October 31st. For Part II crimes, on the other hand, it's fluctuated a little bit more. As you can see, Part II crimes grew from 2,544 in 2017 to the high watermark of 4,541 in 2020. This was a significant jump. Since 2020, Part II crimes have dropped to 2832 in 2021 and are projected to fall to 2,300 in 2022. Now you may be asking yourself, I don't understand the swing. Why has it increased so much and why has it dropped off so much? A lot of that has to do with the Blake decision and recent legislation and COVID. And when I'm talking about the Blake decision, we're talking about drug arrests. And drug arrests, it's not marijuana, we're talking about methamphetamine, we're talking about fentanyl, we're talking about heroin, and the paraphernalia used with using those drugs. To add some perspective, back in 2010, we had a total of 250 drug-related crimes in the city of Bothell. In 2011, it rose to, or excuse me, dropped to 232. In 2012, it climbed to 374 and stayed in that 370 range until 2017, where it grew to 452. In 2018, it again climbed, this time to 599. In 2019, it climbed to 781. And in 2020, it climbed to 1,673 drug cases. Those are significant numbers. Now, since then, those numbers have dropped to 458 in 2021, in large part again due to COVID and the reduction in staffing. We just did not have the officers on the road to proactively enforce laws and to respond to certain types of crimes. Those numbers fell again in 2022. We are projecting to have 233 drug-related cases by the end of this year. The last time we saw drug cases this low was in 2011. Again, this is a result of the Blake decision and legislation and COVID on our Part II crimes for '21 and '22. Onto report writing. In order for the FBI to receive our NIBERS data, an officer must write a case report. Our case report data for the past five years is as follows. As you can see, our 2021 data is more than 2017, but averages between 500 and 600 cases fewer than 2018, 2019, and 2020. The increased caseload for 2018, 2019, and 2020, again, was mainly our increase in drug arrests and drug activity, such as fentanyl, heroin, and methamphetamine. Again, as stated previously, the reduction has a lot to do with Blake, recent legislation, To address traffic control or enforcement in school zones, I have opted to focus on 2022 data, due to the impacts COVID-19 has had on school closures and remote learning. For 2022, January 1 through October 31st, we have conducted enforcement actions at the following schools. These numbers reflect the number of times officers have worked the school zones. An example would be Frank Love, officers have worked those school zones 38 times since the beginning of the school year. And frankly, I'm very happy with these numbers, considering our traffic unit has been tasked with backfilling patrol the vast majority of this year. So on top of backfilling, they've managed to take time and go work these school zones to make sure the children are arriving safely. I'd also like to add, during the last budget, we talked about the implementation of school zone radar cameras. We were going to implement this, this last year, but we were unable to do that just because staffing was so critical at the police department. We did not have the staffing to move forward. We're currently back on track to get the contract approved with the goal of implementation by the beginning of the school year for the '23, '24 school year. So we're moving along on that. Revenue costs related to budget. The items that have impacted the '23, '24 budget the most are personnel costs, maintenance and operation, and evidentiary vehicle storage. Personnel costs are increasing over $4,890,000 from the '21, '22 budget. Personnel costs are increasing over $4,890,000 from the '21-'22 budget. But I'd also like to note that a number of police positions were frozen, not included as part of the '20 and all of the '21 budget. Initially, eight positions in total were frozen: six officers, one sergeant, and one dispatcher. Through attrition, five more positions were also frozen, which included another dispatcher, a dispatch supervisor, an admin assistant, a police support officer, and another police officer, for a total of 13 positions. We also eliminated one contract background investigator. As we look to '23-'24 budget, we are assuming full staffing once again. With that, we have increases in step, cost of living, and benefits that play a role. Onto the next point, which is maintenance and operation. Maintenance and operation costs are increasing by over $467,000. As part of the '21-'22 budget, $512-plus thousand in lease costs for school zone cameras were included for 2022. The current budget doubles that amount for two years' worth of funding. The program costs are projected to be offset by revenues once this program is launched. And lastly, evidentiary vehicle storage. This is something that we have to have to remain accredited. The $196,000-plus in debt interest cost reflects the cost of long-term capital lease on an evidentiary vehicle storage facility necessitated by the loss of Public Workshop Number One, where we had been storing vehicles. And lastly, future needs. The two big needs that I see in the future are the implementation of a body and vehicle camera system for our officers. The other is replacing worn-out vehicles in our fleet. Both of these issues have a lot of moving parts to them, but funding is the primary issue. For the purchase of body and vehicle cameras, there's a large amount of public outreach that would need to be done. We would need to determine a hardware and software vendor, determine how much IS support is needed. Would there be a need to increase record staff to deal with PRRs and union negotiations? And all of this would need to happen before we even get to beta testing. I can say that I'm working closely with City Manager Standard to study possible ways forward on both of these issues, and I'm confident that we'll be able to move the needle on these. And lastly, do you have any questions for me?
Councilmember Aldrich?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for the presentation, for coming and talking to us. I especially appreciate the statistics tracking that you showed us. One, while you were speaking, I pulled up our crime map that's available on the city of Bothell website, because I wanted to better understand what you meant by Part II crimes. And so, one of the, I'm just looking at a chart of crime in Bothell over the last month, and I'm seeing that larceny is pretty common. There's a lot of that going on. And could you speak to how much larceny that your officers are dealing with is related to, like, drug-seeking behavior and a sort of an outgrowth of the drug epidemic?
Two things. First of all, thank you for knowing where to find that information. Most people don't realize that we have that on our site. That is a great question. Many of the people that we contact that are committing thefts, which is a larceny, have some sort of underlying drug issue. It's, we're not dealing with typically, when you think of shoplifting, for example, of the single mom who's trying to find food for her family. These are typically the type of crimes that we're seeing. We're seeing people with literally shopping carts, full of stuff, pushing them out into the parking lot to load their cars. I truly could station somebody full-time at Fred Meyer and at Home Depot. It is that common. The cause, though, the root cause, is that underlying drug addiction. And I feel if we can figure out a way to address that, the world will be a much better place, we'll have fewer larceny calls, and fewer victims out there. If I had the answer to that, I'd probably be living on some island in the Caribbean. But I know that we have to change something to try to fix that problem. Nobody ever wrote in their high school annual, "I want to grow up and be a heroin user." So, people are trying to fund their habit through these thefts typically. Does that help answer the question?
Yeah, it really does. And I appreciate that. I would say, though, if you had the answer, you would be on a speaking tour, and people all over the world would be wanting to hear from you. And so, that does kind of bring up my next, maybe, series of questions, I apologize. When we're talking about recognizing there is an underlying cause to these thefts, and that there is a drug use problem that is there, how often are those individuals that are getting charged for these crimes being referred to community court and/or getting referred to perhaps navigators for drug treatment? And how do you anticipate that changing when we have our Crisis Response Center up and going too? I'm sort of thinking long-term, big picture here.
Again, great questions. Our officers consistently offer resources when we're dealing with people with some sort of drug addiction. Currently, the state requires it. When we're out there, our first two contacts on anybody, when it's drug-related, we have to give them referral information to help them. We have sent a lot of people and put in contact with our navigators as well. I think that our officers do a really good job trying to, I'll just say, work outside the box to try to find resources for people. One of the challenges, frankly, is oftentimes, people go and they accept those resources when they're at rock bottom. Absent that, it's really not impacting their life. So, trying to get people in front of the court or a judge to mandate treatment, that's really not an option anymore. It just doesn't happen like it used to. And then you can see that in the number of drug crimes that we're dealing with, 233, I think it is, and probably half of those are felonies for drug stings. So, I think that, frankly, I think the legislations made it really challenging for us to try to plug people into resources, because if they're not being held accountable, it's not an issue to them.
Thanks for the answer. I think it's just important for us to highlight that crime is related to often unmet human needs. And so, when we're having a conversation on human services, those unmet needs that we maybe aren't able to address with human services then end up affecting our community in terms of becoming a less safe, less healthy, more dangerous place, as I think the chief did a good job describing. And so, I really appreciate you bringing up challenges with legislation and areas of growth and opportunity so that we can better respond to the needs that are being demonstrated when people are committing crime in our community. So, I think that that's really the extent of my questions, but I really appreciate your answers.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I had a couple of questions that aren't actually related, so it's going to jump all over, maybe. So, for school zone enforcement, so my neighborhood school is Shelton View, and I noticed they were down to four. And I have to think that some of that is because it's a very narrow two-lane road that leads up to Shelton View, and I'm wondering if there are things that we can do to help slow down traffic in school zones with the road design, too? Is that something where the city, where maybe we learn from what's going on on the roads, that we have a lot of issues around schools, where, like, that's being looked at? And I'm kind of, like, looping in different departments here, so I'm wondering if there's kind of a lessons learned thing there?
Great question. I will tell you that our traffic unit works with Jamal on a regular basis, probably more than Jamal probably appreciates. But we have a number of issues like that in town, and we bring those forward, and like anything else, we just kind of rate, I don't want to speak for Public Works, but I'm sure that they rate their problem areas on a list of priorities. So, it's, you're not the first person to bring that up. But I wouldn't describe it as something that is mentioned a lot to the police department.
Yeah, and that makes sense, because I imagine the officers aren't taking the time to be like, you know, this road could really benefit from, like, you know, this change. But I think it's really interesting to see the different data and to just understand that so often, we grade roads on how they service cars and not necessarily how safe our children are walking on them, right? And so, there's got to be a balance there, and some of these schools are on such busy roads or roads that we might find ourselves just driving faster on. And, you know, that's something that I would love to hear more follow-up on at some point, so that just the school data made me think, hey, like, one of these things is not like the other, and I think that's why. So, the other question I had is, you had talked about a lot of hiring to get back to full staffing, and I know one of the concerns that I've heard from officers and leadership before at the police department is just how hard it is to hire officers. Do you have a sense of optimism, maybe, about getting back to full staffing? Like, what does that look like?
Why, yes, I do. I will say that we are an anomaly amongst our peers, and I was hoping that was going to be the case. We started out this year, I want to say somewhere between 16 and 18 police officers down, and that's a steep climb when most of our neighboring agencies are, in essence, trying to fill one a month. So, we were looking at an 18-month schedule. I've got amazing people that work in our agency, and they took the challenge. I met with them in June, and I said, how about we get up to full staffing by the end of the year? And they all looked like I hit my head on something hard, but they moved forward with it, and we found some efficiencies in the process. A lot of our neighboring agencies have hiring bonuses. I'm not a big fan of hiring bonuses, and the reason is, is because working here is the bonus. Agencies that have to provide a hiring bonus, there's a reason for that. And it's the same reason they make you send it through your contract, or you have to pay it back. It's because they need to. We don't need to. And we're projected to be fully staffed by the end of the year, I'm happy to say. Now, it's going to take a while to get everybody trained up, because the academy, that's a whole nother thing. I can't control that. But typically, it takes about a year from point of hire to the person being off of probation actually working on their own. So, this will be the first time that we've been fully staffed in years. So, I'm super excited about being able to go out there and start some of these proactive programs, bike patrol, getting people out visiting in the community that we just haven't been able to do because of that staffing issue.
That makes sense. And then I had a question, and this is my last one, I think, around multiple units responding to calls. So, when I went on my ride-along in May, we did kind of run into the same units every time there was a call, like, everybody kind of met back up. Do you see, and I think some of that was the call, but some of that was, there was one officer per car, right? They're not, it's not like a cop show where they're all buddies so that they can play off of each other. So, if we get back to full staffing, would we see, like, two officers in a car so that maybe there's less instances of multiple units responding to a call? Is there an efficiency there, or am I just reaching too far?
Again, it's a great question. We could end up there, but not because we want to. It's just how many cars we have, and if we're running into things and causing them to be at the shop. Ideally, individual patrol cars is the best option. We cover more ground more efficiently. I like that. Now, there are times when having two officers per car is handy, such as maybe a night where we're doing, like, firework enforcement or some sort of enforcement activity. That can be really handy, because then you have one person maybe that's doing the CAD notes, writing something on the computer while the other person's driving to the next call. So, there are benefits. Frankly, we're just not that big of an agency yet. There are times for it, and frankly, I will say, it is enjoyable at times to ride with somebody else and make your way through the shift. Definitely, when you're working graveyards, it's nice to have somebody next to you keeping you awake.
Thank you very much.
Question. With body cameras and vehicle cameras, thinking about security and ride-along and all that, a question just popped up into my head. Are the vehicle cameras and the body cameras, is that all recorded, or would somebody be watching that live view?
There is ways, depending on the program that you have, to access that. But the policy would be fairly restrictive on cameras. And frankly, it's, I don't want to get the cart before the horse on this. The idea behind having the car cameras and the vehicle cameras, for me, it's about perspective. Sometimes you'll pick something up on a car camera that you're not going to pick up on a body camera, vice versa. And I like to be able to see really clear with the car cameras, the traffic violation, for example, which you wouldn't be able to pick up so much on a chest-mounted body camera because of the steering wheel, and everything's right in front of you. And then, when you get away from the car, then you have your camera and mic that picks up the interactions with the individuals we're dealing with. But there's a lot of policy and public outreach that have to go into, to happen before we even get there to figure out, okay, what's the public want? You know? They may say, well, we don't want body cameras, we don't want car cameras. And so, we have that, or they may want one or the other. So, that's the first step. It's the community outreach. What do you want? What would you like to see from your police department? From a police chief's standpoint, and I can tell you from the officer's standpoint, we see the value in having cameras. You know, the past couple of years have taught us that. But the new technology, if an officer doesn't activate their camera, depending on which one it is, you can actually force that data out. It's automatically picking it up, because you have that human element. Sometimes people are going to forget under stress to turn things on or to turn things off, and we want to be able to pick things up that maybe an officer inadvertently failed to activate, so.
Okay. So, if there was a situation where, and you're right, the community needs to weigh in on what they want. But if there was a situation where an officer's pulled over a car and they're feeling like they need backup, probably not just turning on a camera, saying, can you watch what's going through this camera, they would be calling another officer to come in?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
The technology's getting there. I just came back from a conference where they were actually showing high-risk stops, where they were able to tap into body cameras on the scene. So, it's getting there, technologically speaking. But for the most part, officers, they call for their backup.
Okay.
And on top of that, officers just typically roll. If you've done a ride-along, they're typically rolling to the officer before they even ask for it anyways.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And just to reiterate, too, for those who haven't necessarily, or might be watching at home and haven't necessarily read through the full budget document, camera programs are not being funded in this current budget, and they are a significant lift, and I agree with what the chief said, is that the first step would really be around outreach of figuring out what do, what does it look like for Bothell? And then we could start figuring out tuning, and what would it look like? But I just want to make sure that folks are clear that that's, we're not at a point of investment yet, but if the council's interested in hearing options that certainly work, we can add to the plate.
Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, has the work of a police officer changed at all over the last decade? Is it more complex, less complex? Does it take more time to do the work that they do, or less?
Thank you for asking. That is an outstanding question. It has. One of the challenges, I was just speaking to another commander recently from another agency, I think we've reached a place with the academy that they need to make it longer. We continually add more responsibility and more training on the officer during the academy. And with that, especially over the past couple of years with the new mandates, some other things have been pulled back, which I view as officer safety type of trainings, whether it's defensive tactics, or just verbal de-escalation. The amount of time that we used to spend on scenarios is much less down at the academy now, and departments are being tasked with picking up the load on that, which we weren't funded for, by the way. for, by the way. So that creates problems. I will say it's changed exponentially. 10 years ago, I could do a DUI, process a DUI in probably a couple hours. For the most part now, it's a good half-year shift from whether it's transporting, going back, writing your documents, writing the report, and getting things entered into the system. So what used to be a couple hours is between four and six now. And then on top of that, it's, there's just a lot of mandated trainings that are required that take us off the road. So on top of just being short-staffed the past couple of years, trying to make sure we're following through with our state mandates, not just our state mandates, because that's the minimum. We want to be better than that. So trying to make sure we have good quality training, to make sure we have the best of the best out there, and that they're the best equipped, yeah, that takes time, and it takes money. So, yeah, I think probably in the next couple of years, I think they're going to have to really take a hard look at the academy to make it longer. And I think additional trainings, we, field training, used to be 12 weeks. It was 12 weeks when I started in 1990. Okay, well, a lot has happened. We had, like, three laws back in 1990. Now there's hundreds. So now, we've expanded that out to, you know, 16 weeks-ish. So I think long-term, we'll probably have to really evaluate that as well. Are we giving them enough time to really master this before we put them out on their own?
Looking out five or 10 years, what other technology is kind of coming down the line that could help either with efficiency within the department, keeping our community safe or officers safe, and providing better service to the community? Just thinking long-term about budget.
I'm not going to lie, sometimes technology just scares me because I don't know, rarely to go, wow, technology really helped me. It seems like it's just another thing. Every day when I come in, and I got 250 emails or whatever in my queue. So I think things that are going to help us in the next five, 10 years, it's going to be being able to dictate reports into your phone. It will automatically transcribe that into the report. I think that's probably one of the big moves that I can see happening. I can see more camera-based footage in court cases being utilized, more camera systems locally, such as license plate readers. There's a company out there, a number of them actually, that have cameras embedded in them. And these companies work with law enforcement to identify suspect vehicles. And you, the police department enters the parameters that we know a crime happened between this time and this time, and we're looking for a white Camaro. And the company will go through their data, and they'll give us a list of white Camaros that went through this area in this period of time. There's also technology out there for, like, Ring cameras where residents can partner with law enforcement, that if a crime occurs, we can send them an email and says, hey, there was a vehicle prowling in your neighborhood between this time and this time. We'd like to access your Ring doorbell data between this time and this time to look for any suspects that may match the description that we're looking for. And then the resident has the option to let us participate or not in that. And then I think the next big thing that we're going to see is real-time crime centers. I think that that is going to be the next big push in law enforcement because resources are becoming more and more scarce, so we have to be very thoughtful in how we allocate those resources. And by utilizing a real-time crime center, I think you, you're definitely utilizing your resources the most effective. And that's, there's companies out there, and they, again, partnering with the different, like, Ring doorbell or these other camera systems that they have out there. That's probably the big technological leap that I see in the next five years.
Okay. That's helpful. I know as we continue to grow, we're never going to be able to put enough people to the problem to help solve it efficiently. So I think knowing kind of what's coming, what's out there, what's emerging, can help us plan for that in the future through technology. We need to be careful about what we use and how we engage our community before we begin to use it. But a lot of solutions, just generally in the world, are being solved with technology. And if we're not adapting and reacting and looking at those solutions to help solve the problem, I think we're going to be missing out on a lot of opportunity. And I also think, you know, we're going to be spending a lot more money on salary and other things that could be saved and put towards other things like human services or parks or whatever else we want to fund. So that's really helpful. Two more quick questions. Do you know, right now with body cams, is there any kind of technology that exists that activates the body cam automatically upon the officer exiting the vehicle?
I believe so. I think there's a couple vendors out there whose equipment, hardware, actually does that. And one of them, I think, also lets you access the camera from, like, a command post. So where you can, you can access that. But again, those kind of programs, however we, if we ever get to a place where we have body or car cams, it's really going to need to be framed by our community, and I don't want to lose sight of that. I work for the community. So I just want to make sure we're providing the resources and the equipment that they would want us to have.
Absolutely. I only ask that question because I know one of the big concerns is what if the officer chooses not to turn it on because of some motivation not to do it? And if there's a way to preempt that? Or we're all humans, as you mentioned, you know, you're in pursuit of something, or you're driving code to a call, your adrenaline's running, you just forget sometimes to do things. And if we can prevent that, if we can institute things that prevent that from happening, I think that's a positive. And pivoting off of that, human nature to a question that Councilmember Dodd asked about with vehicles being, driving slow, things that we can do in school zones. I was reading today about psychological nudging, and one thing that was useful in Chicago was painting lines on the street in an area of reduced speed. And you paint the lines farther apart, and as you're coming to a place where the speed slows down, you get closer and closer together so it feels like you're going faster. And that psychologically nudges you to push your brake and slow down, even if you're already doing, you know, the speed limit, or already slowing down, it causes you to do it even more. So I'm curious, have you looked at that for school zones, or is that possible for our school zones to even try it out, test it somewhere?
Well, I don't want to commit public works to anything. She's sitting right next to me. But I'm always game to try anything that makes the school zones safer, as long as it's cost-effective. But that is really kind of a public works thing. I will say, I used to work in an agency where a lady painted her hairdryer gray and actually sat out on the road and made people believe it was a radar gun and slowed people down tremendously. So I think creativity is always worth a look.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Public safety is always first and foremost on my mind. But great questions. I think probably for me, the school zones resonate heavily with me because of, you know, the things that happened in Kenmore here not too long ago. If we do have full staffing by the end of the year, does that mean that we'll be able to do some additional enforcement in those school zones?
Absolutely. Because in addition to the staffing that we're going to have, well, it's kind of a twofold thing. We're going to have cameras in place, and then we can also have officers working the school zones in areas where maybe we don't have the cameras, or a combination of both. I like, years ago, I know Sergeant Rogers, who's in our traffic unit. One of the things that I love that he does is he makes his way to the grade schools and actually spends time with the crossing guards. And they absolutely love that. So there's kind of a twofold thing. A, park the motorcycle on the corner and everybody sees it. And B, we're getting some real positive interaction with the students and the kids out there that are trying to make it safe for their classmates. So those are things that I like to see happen with our department. And, you know, by having that staff, and we can go out there and do those kind of programs.
Well, that's music to my ears because that reminds me of community service officers that are, that are out there engaging with those kids in a meaningful way, in a positive way, and it humanizes both ways. I think you've heard me speak about that often, that some of my most impactful moments as a child were receiving playing cards from police officers growing up. And that interaction both ways is what humanized the officer at that time. So hopefully, we can see that. I think that the impact of having officers sitting around the school zones, whether a car, motorcycle, bicycle, whatever, just seeing that officer out there hopefully is impactful for those speeders as well, just to slow them down. We see the impact of the speed signs that they have in those areas as well, slowing cars down. So I think that's a big public safety thing that weighs on me heavily, is ensuring that the safety of our kids getting to and from school, especially when we have a lack of sidewalks and things like that. So thank you for your service there. The other thing that concerns me is the conversation around legislation that's happened and the crime in our communities that has decreased for drugs. And talking about human services and crisis centers and, I'm not quite sure I'm understanding the big picture here. And hopefully, you can shed some light on the legislation that's, that's changed, that decreases the crime. And let me tell you, let me tell you a little story of why I'm concerned about this. It's because I'm in the construction industry, and the number one cost for us that's increased this year is crime on job sites. That has increased more than the actual cost of buying a refrigerator or a dishwasher or an appliance. It's the crime. They're coming in, they're stealing, they're breaking windows, they're doing all these things. And as I think you alluded to, it's, it's people who are on drugs. And the problem is already happening. They're already addicted, they're already creating the crime. And so I just kind of want to understand, how do we get in front of this? What do we need to do to get in front of this? And what is legislation doing to hinder us from doing that?
I wish I had an easy answer for that. You know, I kind of want to go back to, you know, my role as the police chief is to be the chief law enforcement officer for the city of Bothell, not the chief lawmaker for the city of Bothell. I, I think that the people that are, that have made some of the decisions legislatively are really coming from a good place, and they want to help people get off drugs. I, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's working. I'll just say that. I understand it, but I think that oftentimes, we want to create a one-stop fix. And that's just not the world we live in. You have people that are doing drugs for a variety of reasons. They could have been an employee at Boeing, and they got hurt, and next thing you know, they're hooked on opioids, and they're now just circling the drain, so to speak, and committing crimes that they wouldn't have done five years ago. You have other people that suffer from mental health issues that are self-medicating. And that's a whole nother ballgame on trying to address that. I think what we need to do as a society is really understand that we just can't have one fix. We, we have to have a variety of options available to us. And it could be, you know, these centers where we can, it's kind of like detox for drugs that we can take people to. We need places to take people for mental health issues. The mental health system was defunded in the 60s. We were promised, as a nation, that we were going to have a community sites built to deal with the shutting down of all these state hospitals. That never happened. And the money just went to the feds somewhere, but it didn't come here. And in absence of that, law enforcement, fire, and ERs were tasked with dealing with mental health issues and not funded to deal with it. So I think that, I would just say, the best approach, and if I had the answer, I would be on the talking circuit. But I think that we have to have a multifaceted approach to deal with all of these issues. If we had a, I could fill a 16-bed facility tomorrow, okay, with just us. So I'm excited to see those programs start up and with the goal of that they're going to expand, very much like with radar. That took a while, but we finally got people on board. Now it's expanding. So I don't think it's going to change overnight. It's going to, it's going to take a while to get there. Took us a long time to get here as a, as a nation, as a community. So it's going to take a while for us to get out of this. But we have to fund the legal system, we have to fund the care facilities, the rehab facilities, the mental health facilities, to help, to help these people live a normal life so we don't have to just have the one option of taking them to jail.
And I hope in that, in that process, we're, when you say one fix, not one fix all, but I hope we're looking at things proactively and finding out the root cause of why people are turning to drugs. And we can find ways to get out in front of it, to help them before it becomes an issue, before they go that far down the road. So hopefully, through these programs, we can find solutions for that as well. And then lastly, I think a concern of mine is also the crime that happens within our community, on our community, is that mainly coming from our community? Meaning, do we, do we find that the people who are committing these thefts within our community are from our community? And that the people from our community are addicted to drugs, or they're just creating small theft crimes? Or I'm trying to gauge a sense of what our overall problem is here in Bothell as well.
That's a great question. I think I've talked to maybe a couple councilmembers probably in the past year or two on this subject. The vast majority of our crime is committed by people who live outside the city of Bothell. And that's not to say we don't have people who live in our community that commit crime. But the vast majority is from outside. And I could probably come up with some data on that if the rest of the council's interested. But that's not unusual. We're right on the 405 corridor. We find that a lot of our crimes are committed, people that are in transit from Everett down to Renton, for example. And there's, I don't want to call them crime syndicates, but they're groups that come up and they do organized retail theft, for example, like at Fred Meyer's or Home Depot, and it's a group of them. And they just move that 405 I-5 corridor truly up and down the West Coast. So yes, we do have crime in town. I will, I will say that I think our numbers for, projected for 2022, I don't want to jinx it, but I think it's going to be a little bit lower than the five-year average, which is exciting for me. I mean, that's, as a chief, that's what you want. You want to see crime actually going down in your community. And I think we're going to get there. But the vast majority of the people that are committing crimes are outside the city.
Great. Thank you. And as somebody who's been victimized of personal crime, car theft, and someone who breaking into my home, I'm also hoping that that goes down. And I do see the effects of that on not just the person who's actually committing the crime, but the victim themselves. There's a story behind those victims. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate this. I love data. I love looking at charts. I took screenshots of a couple over here. And, yeah, I was watching the YouTube thing, too, six screenshots. Because you know what would be really cool? If you could share your talking points also, because you had, you talked a lot of, in there, if it's at all possible, you can redact whatever you need to redact, but to get more. The color commentary was really cool. It was really good. Because as I am looking at this, for example, the calls for service versus officers dispatched, if you remember the bar chart, I see the, you know, the, the total, the bars are declining, you know? Regardless of why that's happening, you, you mentioned big decision. Which sidebar, I agree, when somebody mandates something, they need to supply the resources and the, whatever, whether it's funding, people, whatever, processes. So it seems like maybe there's a miss, and hopefully, that will get worked out. But I see the, going back to the topic, I see the number, the service calls going down, but then you're asking for... but then you're asking for more resources, more, you know, staffing up to the level. How is that? It's not, in my mind, as we say in, you know, in the tech, it's not computing, you know, because I see the numbers going down, calls, the, the need is going down, but then you, you want more resources to handle the declining needs, if that makes sense. You can go back to your...
Yeah, I, I think so. Let me, let me try to address that the best I can. So I think it was 2016, 2017, we were looking at the levy, for example, and to hire additional officers to deal with the increase in crime. Well, the increase happened, but the positions got frozen. And so what I had is I was working my officers to the bone, where we ended up losing officers because they were just working too much, and it's not safe. And they didn't complain, they continued to do the job during this last couple of years. And crime went up exponentially up into 2020. Now, the challenge, when you see those numbers go down, there's a couple of things to look at. Some of it is because we do our job really, really well. An example I have is we do a lot of drug stings. And in the drug stings, the common theme amongst the drug dealers, when we do get them in custody, is I'll sell you drugs, I just won't do it in Bothell, because I know I'm going to get arrested. So the goal for any police chief is exactly what you see on there, is driving down crime. Now, there's a lot of things that play on that. It's, we want to make this a hard target for criminals to play in, and I think our officers do a superb job doing that. So we could, in essence, cut positions, watch crime climb, and that's kind of what we saw in 2020, as crime increased, we didn't have the bodies to fight it. But we also had other things at play too, which was COVID. COVID impacted everybody, including the criminal element. So they don't want to get COVID and die either. So we saw a lot of reduction in criminal behavior. So I, I'd love to, I guess, you know, I, I want to provide the level of service the community wants. I can tell you as the chief, pre-2020, there was a lot of talk about wanting the police to be out in the community more. What we've seen for the past three years is just reactive law enforcement with occasional If we reduce that, that's all we get is reactive law enforcement. The levy program built in a buffer so we can do proactive things, like having police officers on bicycles in the downtown corridor during the summer or on the trail, more traffic enforcement. The number one complaint we get in town, it's not drug activity, it's speeders. Okay? What are you doing about traffic in my neighborhood? So we have not done a whole lot of traffic enforcement because we have not had the bodies to do it. And I think that's kind of shown in the, the calls that I get in my office and emails that I get, and I think occasionally the council gets as well. So ideally, if we're doing our job well, and I think we are, we should be pushing those numbers down. I think it's a good problem to have. So I don't know if I answered your question well at all.
You did. Actually, you answered another question that I didn't have, but that was a very good question, very extreme. So we know that there are, I mean, you sold me at speeding cars. I mean, I mean, I see it all the time, maybe we should eliminate cars, not actually have officers, but separate, separate conversation. And we talked about how data is hard to collect and extract from the, in the system itself, so I feel like maybe that's a worthwhile investment to, to think, maybe not in this cycle, in the next cycle, invest in a better way of entering data and, and getting it out also. Because one of the things that, a chart, I didn't, because I was so focused on the, 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 you know, you had the one which started from 7,000 to 8,500, but then because of between 7,500 and 8,000, it made it look like a much bigger gap than it actually is, but there's also, I'm a data nerd, so I, I pick on those things. I, I appreciate you, I think we agree on the need for public safety, there are still bad guys, but we do need to address root causes, as we're discussed, you know, previously here. And I just want to mention that I really appreciate the, that we are going to include the community before we make any, as we are discussing more technology procurement, and having that adopted before. We talk, we talk all the time about this, this thing, because, you know, there are issues, especially when you're automating collection of information from residents just happen to be in the area, now you're collecting information about them without them knowing, and that goes into constitutional, constitutional things. I think that's it. These are the, the questions, I had the question about this. I would really appreciate, because I need to, that, the charts, I want to, I would like to have more time, you know, analyzing that data, if that's okay.
Yeah, I, I can make sure that, I'll also include, I'll get this to the city manager, the, the data that I have on the drug increases that I talked about earlier. I didn't want to create too many slides because sometimes everybody's looking at the slides and then they're not listening to me. So I wanted to be kind of careful on how I did that, so I definitely can get...
No, you, you, it's, that'll be, the more information, the better. I feel like if you can sell them, send them in Excel, you know?
Sure.
And councilmembers, we will get the, both presentations tonight, and we can do last week's as well, including actually the kickoff, because Councilmember Zorn's had a question about positions, and that was in the kickoff slides too. So what I'm thinking is that we'll get those posted on the city's budget website, so that not only for council, but for all the community members, as we're coming into the last public session. So Becky and I will work on getting those posted this week.
Thank you.
Chief, your department was a huge team player in making sure we got through the last budget with all of the uncertainty around COVID, and if I haven't said thank you for that enough yet, thank you to you and your whole department and everybody in there. I know that's more work on everybody else when you're 18 people down. So thanks, we appreciate it. I, I was, had a note in here, I wanted to copy the slides too, because I had a similar thought to Councilmember Dodd. Assuming the roads are patrolled the same amount, which might not be an accurate assumption, I would love to see a picture of the number of infractions, or a, a list of the number of infractions next to a picture of the road. And I, I would just be curious to see what street design looks like. I can look up the pictures of the road, just send me the slides and I can take it from there. Do you think those were patrolled roughly equally? The school zone infraction slide.
Okay, I, I guess I was, I was trying to track, so that was the number of times that officers actually worked the school zones, so those aren't the number of infractions, right?
Got it. Okay. Never mind then.
And, and just so everybody understands, we're, we're not a real, I'll just describe us as not a ticket-heavy department, we're, we're big into education. I think that's the best place to start. So that's kind of my marching orders for our officers, I think they do a really good job at that, and that's not to say some people don't get it, but for the most part, I think most people do.
Perfect. Well, thanks for everything. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much.
City managers, at the end of our study session?
Yeah, those are the, those were the two topics for tonight. We will, again, work on compiling some summarized responses, getting PowerPoints posted, and this will all come back as an attachment in next week's packet, as we, again, try and work on wrapping up the questions council had and giving options and getting towards adoption.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for your work. I know even though the people that weren't talking tonight weren't talking tonight, I know you're all still doing a ton of work around this, and we appreciate it. So thank you all. We're adjourned. Go. Hang, hang on.
I've got a quick question. There was one item from the, from the original questions list that I wanted to bring back up. I would like to see if there's three additional folks on council who are in agreement or interested in moving the legislative lobbyists funding down into non-departmental budget from our council budget.
That's not on the agenda tonight, and nothing was added to the agenda, and council conversations is also not on the agenda tonight. City managers, is there a time when we could take that conversation topic back up?
Yeah, let's, I mean, I think, I think you could do it, but also let's give some time to think about it. We'll bring that back as part of the conversation for next week. We'll figure out how to tee that up and make sure. So that's your homework between now and next Tuesday, is think about if you'd like to see that adjusted, and we'll queue up that question.
Perfect. And just generally for future reference during these types of meetings where it's just a study session, we're not putting council conversations on the agenda?
Yeah, we went to what was listed in the council protocol manual from, holdover from back in the day when every second Tuesday was a study session, so we use that to inform the, the makeup of tonight's agenda, and we can revisit that when you look at your protocols again.
Perfect. Councilmember Zorn's, is it quick? Is it quick?
Yeah.
Okay. Make it quick.
I'll make it. All right. It's my birthday, I should have a crown on my head, temporary crown on my head. I just wanted to do a couple of quick thank yous. One, to our police department for the food drive for Hope Link. We were, a couple of council members and former council members attended that, and I hope it's at QFC again, because what a great spot to send people in with a, you know, mental shopping list. But thank you for doing that. And then I also have to thank Parks for the trees that are going in on Wayne Course and the help from scouts and, and whale scouts. And then the last thing I wanted to do was to thank our veterans. We're remembering them on Friday. I think City Hall's going to be closed?
Correct. Government will be shut down for the day, although we still have people out and about.
Okay. But I just want to say to, to all the veterans, thank you for your service and thank you for your sacrifice. My father taught me, I had an argument that free, that there really were free things, and he said, no, there's no, nothing that's free, and that's, it costs someone something, and that's true for the freedom. So thank you to our veterans. And that's it.
All right. It's nobody else's birthday, so we're going to adjourn from there. See y'all next week.